This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is May 2 at 7:01 PM. And we'll go do a roll call. So Lynn Blair.
Tracy.
Tammy Saif.
We got.
Michael.
No public comments. As far as communications, most of what I have, we'll discuss later on in the agenda. Other than that, we are putting together the details for the summer reading program. Everything's coming together. We've got our opening day set, June 24. We have Firefly Farms coming with like a mobile petting zoo, so that'll be exciting. And then Molly, our children's librarian, has Kevin O'Keefe lined up for Circus Minimus program. So it should be a cool morning. And.
It's a Saturday, right?
Saturday. Yep, yep. Saturday, June 24. I think we're gonna do like 10 to 12:30. I think I made enough copies. April minutes for everybody. Oh, yeah. So I just, I made a few corrections. Extras. I'll just make like a staff. Yeah, so thank you for Tammy for doing the minutes. I just had a few corrections that I'll just buzz through. Under the acceptance of minutes, we had also approved the January 30 special meeting minutes and February minutes. Second line up from the bottom, I just said donations made in memory of Irene Wolf. Donations made to the library. Page. I just corrected the data was tabled. We did discuss the February statistics, but I have the March statistics here tonight. Fourth paragraph down, I just corrected Cindy's name. Under new business, the strategic plan I just was approved, put approved by the MBLC. Oh, sorry. That's okay. And then. And below that line, the email list, it's MailChimp. I just changed that. And then under summer reading, I know it's, I instinctually do like Beanstalk too, because I feel like that makes sense, but it's Beanstack.
I can only go by what.
Oh, yeah. No, no, that's fine. That's fine. And then it's just Reed squared. I think that was, that was what I noticed for. Those goats. It's MailChimp.
Yeah. Thank you.
Motion to approve the April minutes with the.
I'll second that question.
Michael.
Yes.
Tammy, yes.
Tracy, yes.
And then as promised, I messed it up last month. They were actually right in front of me. So I have, these are the March statistics around. Statistics. We're a little heavy on the paper tonight. So, yeah, we have March statistics and April statistics. March, for whatever reason, has been like a really busy month the past two years. I think, and I'm surprised because we were closed two days because of the snow, but circulation was still really good. I think we just have a lot of events in March. It just happens to work out that way, but March was a great month. And April too, I mean, we're still hitting over the 4,000 circulation per month mark, so I think that's very good. Yeah, I don't know what it is about March, but March is like, the summer's busy and then it seems to be like March for some reason. Everybody's out of hibernation. And in April, there was, there were some donations as well. I think we still have one more in memory of Irene Wolf, which has been, we've gotten quite a lot in memory personally. It's really nice. Anybody have any questions or comments? This is old business. Cindy isn't here to report on the book drop, so we'll just table that to next month. The new library email server, we discussed last month, if you remember. MailChimp free service is no longer, they're really limiting it to the number of subscribers and we're pushing that mark where we need to either find something new or pay for it, and it was just too expensive. So I did propose Library Aware. We did sign up for that. So we've got it paid from April to June of 2024. And it's fantastic. Staff really like it. I spent a couple of days inputting all of our contacts are like 360 email contacts from MailChimp are now in Library Aware. I tried to, when I exported it to an Excel, every time it came through in some weird convoluted format. So I said, you know what? I don't want to risk anybody getting dropped from an email list or anything getting messed up, so I just did it one at a time. But that was okay. I was like listening to a training in the background and I was moving stuff over, so I was pretty heavily multitasking that day. But everybody's moved over. The features are great. They have like pre-made, really nice email layouts, so we can just plug in our information and send it. They have pre-made book display posters, brochures. It's geared for libraries, so it's like you go to the search bar and be like, I want something for a library of things. They'll already have like pre-made stuff for it, and then you just tweak it here and there for it to fit us. So it's really, it's really fantastic.
So you can send the three or four hundred emails that he wants instead of in groups of 25 or 16.
Well, I have, I have, we have about six or seven different categories. We have like the links. We do adult, family, teens. And then I have one for like the book club and the book club. But we can have unlimited subscribers, so we can keep signing up. I mean, like in March when we did 25 new cards, I mean, 90% of people who sign up for a card want to be on some email list, so we keep getting more and more. So this way we have unlimited, so we don't have to worry about hitting a ceiling anywhere. And it is super convenient and they are extremely helpful, so I'm happy. I think the rest of our staff is pretty happy with the switch too. We posted the summer library page position. That position will close May 12 at 5:00 PM. So it's just dependent. We can't officially hire somebody until after the town meeting, but this way we can at least get the ball rolling and get somebody. Because we really like to have somebody hired in place for the start of summer reading. So the last week in June was the ideal time for somebody to start. So that's underway. Under new business, we did receive our next state aid award. So the second award was 11,922 cents, which is really good. The first award we got a couple of months ago was 11,869 and 6 cents, so a pretty successful year, I think. All right. And I wanted to make sure we had time. Everybody's like looking at the papers on the table being. I know. So. The first one is, there's been a lot of trainings going around regarding. We made like our material selection policy a couple of months ago because of a lot of like the challenges that are happening. And a lot of other libraries from both the trainings and the discussions on email lists have really recommended having part of your material selection policy have to do with displays as well. So what we do with display, we, I mean, our staff, we pick something that's relating to an upcoming program. We pick something newsworthy, seasonal. But this, so this paragraph I had here would essentially be inserted into the material selection policy so that if somebody had a formal complaint about a display, we could handle that in the same format.
Does it mean exactly when it says all items and displays have been purchased until the material selection?
Purchase, I'll say purchase. Following the material selection. I don't, I don't know what word I meant that I just spelled. That's probably it. Let's go with under. I think that sounds better. All materials have been purchased under the material selection policy. It does, because it, the word is wrong.
The computer doesn't know what brand you want.
Exactly. Yeah, so this, this is essentially if someone had a concern or complaint about a display that was made by library staff, that we could follow the same procedures, like if they were, our material selection policy also covers books and programs.
Do we want to just go through all the policies?
Probably makes the most sense, I would think, that way we can. Next, I, what, basically the reasoning, I'm not going crazy here, the reasoning is I was just going through a policy handbook because I noticed a couple of things that were out of date, and I said, we might as well just go through and just completely just go through it. So I'm not being crazy and trying to rewrite everything. Hopefully we can do this and then everything will be set for a little while. So the next one you'll see is the paperwork that people receive and fill out when they're going to exhibit artwork here in the gallery. The, the second page of that is pretty self-explanatory. It's just because it lists Anne as the director still. I figured we should change that. However, the first page for the policies and guidelines, it keeps mentioning the gallery committee. We really don't have, it's, it's just Janine LeFort is our gallery committee, so it's a one-person committee. So I don't know if that's something you'd want to change. We could just put like, you know, gallery coordinator. I don't, she doesn't really have an official title. But. But I could change all of that to be the gallery coordinator so that, you know, people aren't misled in thinking that there is a committee.
That's probably.
And then that was it as far as this one, unless anybody has any questions. Tracy's studying it very hard. I don't want to interrupt. Good, good. Okay. That's that one.
You're gonna put your name here and place events.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it mentions the gallery coordinator on the other side. It's just, yeah, it's just Anne's, because I don't want to keep signing for Anne. Public service policies.
Trustees after the town election should be doing this.
Oh, I thought, and then you two again? I know, I was gonna say, did I read the wrong thing?
You're right. We're on the post, so I guess it is gonna be us.
Just remind me.
We know we, you know. I heard it's a life sentence.
This one is pretty simple as well. I'm throwing a lot of papers at you guys.
Holy employees.
So this is the public service policies. The only thing I wanted to make a change was on the very last page, we have a section about services to minors. But we have a whole nother policy that we wrote about use of the libraries by minors, which is newer and it supersedes what is written here. So what I'd be asking you to do is just remove this section on services to minors from the public service policies because we have the new use of the library by minors policies, which is much more detailed. So this is our social media policy that is going around. We did have to change a couple of things with this because our Facebook for the library was set up in a very strange way. It was set up as something, they're calling, they called it like a gray account. And we had to change it because it was just an account that wasn't attached to a person. So what we had to do is I had to attach it to my personal Facebook account so that in order to post, I mean, I'm, I don't post for myself. What I do is I log in as myself and then I switch to the Southwick Library, but it has to be attached to an actual account. So the, the last paragraph up from the bottom on the first page, staff that are allowed to post regularly is just essentially me now because I'm not giving anybody else access to my Facebook account. So I will just change it to say that the library director will be the one that's posting. And. The other trick is, yeah, so. Essentially, I'm the only one that will have access to the page. Last sentence up from the bottom, library staff whose responsibilities include posting to social media must use their library workstation computers to post content and not personal devices. I prefer not to log into my personal social media on library computers. I feel much more secure logging into it from my device. So. If we want to remove that part, because I would much prefer, I feel much better logging into my social media from my device. So I can just say, you know, the library director will be the one posting. I don't even think we need to mention where it was posted from, because it's just gonna be me. So we can just remove that aspect. Because when, when it was other staff, you know, I worry about other staff like posting from who knows where, public computers, whatnot. I don't. But, you know, it's just gonna be me. I'm hyper aware about the security on my devices and I rarely log into social media. So I just feel better not logging into it on a work computer. And it's much, it's just much more convenient to go through the app anyway. So that is the changes I propose on that. So for the welcome information. Under the first category, what you need to sign up for a card, where it says if your card needs to be replaced, we charge a $2 fee. We stopped doing that during COVID and we never really picked it back up. I think it's just good customer service to not, we have plenty of cards. There's no reason for us to charge $2 for a card. We have boxes of them. Under borrowing period, the library of things and hotspots. All the other items say that they can be renewed once, except the library of things. So I'd just like to add that they go out for one week and they can be renewed one time. And under late fees, I'd also just like to add a note that, you know, our library doesn't have late fees. Other libraries may have late fees. And then, just so patrons are aware of that as well. Very few Massachusetts libraries charge late fees anymore, but there are still some that do. So patrons may be held accountable for those from that only library. And then. A current, up under what you need for a library card. A current library card is required to check out materials. But from the last time Tammy made the suggestion of having a state ID or a license as well for people who forget their library cards. Any questions for anybody? Internet use policy. I know, it is really, I really, I didn't purposely put a lot under the director's report because I wasn't sure how long this was gonna take. And I don't want to keep everybody, the pile was intimidating. So under the internet use policy that's coming around, under number five, where it says the library does offer one-on-one training on basic computer usage every month. I'd just like to remove that because we don't, there hasn't, there hasn't been a demand for it. And if we do decide to do it, then we can kind of do that on our own terms and advertise it like our own event. But this way people searching for it don't go, oh, you know, and see that we have this when we don't actually offer it currently.
So the following sentence, information on signing up for one-on-one training is available with reference tests should also be.
Also delete that. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. We want to, under section one, it says there will be a one-hour limit per day for computer usage per patron. We never have a waitlist for our computers. So I mean, we could also change that to, you know, there's a one-hour limit only if other people are waiting. Three for adults, two for teens, and sometimes the adults, if there's overflow, then they use the teens. So we could say, you know, well, there's a one-hour limit only if other patrons are waiting. If we really don't have a week, if there's nobody waiting, we put patrons here for a couple of hours working. I mean, we're not gonna kick you off if there's nobody waiting. That makes no sense. Replacement fees for lost and damaged materials. So. One part in here. The library does not accept replacement copies or materials in lieu of payment. I would like to change that during, during COVID. We were a little bit more lenient about this because, you know, some, some items, when we get them from our vendor are very expensive. And if patrons didn't have extra funds, you know, we were compromising and let them purchase, you know, a newer copy from Amazon or if they could find a cheaper copy, because sometimes the items, you know, they were $50 when we ordered them 10 years ago. It's no longer worth $50. So, you know, it was a very difficult time for people and we didn't want to charge a lot when people didn't have it. So I would just like to, and we've kind of kept up with that practice just because it's much more user-friendly, much more customer-friendly. So how I would like to order and change it is that the library can accept replacement items for lost or damaged items at the discretion of the director. So that. I just want to write down my wording so I got that right. So that if, if they want, they can pay for it outright if they want to. However, if they want to purchase a replacement item, they just need to check in with me first and then I can explain to them that it needs to be in a new condition, you know, not, not pre-used, that, you know, if you can tell that it's been kind of banged around a little bit. However, unless, if it is an interlibrary loan item and it belongs to another library, then they need to handle that with the other library. But at least this way, you know, I think it's just kind of a, a more user-friendly way, because if somebody damages a book that's already 10 years old, I mean, how many times has it gone out in 10 years? You know. So I just think this, it's, it's a little bit nicer for the patrons as well. And then the last one was the trustees bylaws, and I know, I know we did that last time, but Mike noticed something. Michael noticed something. What was it you, I'll, wait, oh, wait till it comes around and then you can point it out so we can change it.
Basically, it says that there's six trustees elected for three-year terms. Well, mathematically, that would be two per year. But the content actually says it will be one elected each year.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so how? So we want to say the board shall be composed of six members, two of whom shall be elected each year. Trustees serve without compensation for a term of three years. Okay, so is that, is that the only, that's the only change?
The other thing though, realistically, we don't really have a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary.
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
You know, that sounds like something that came from Robert Jewels' order or something 50 years ago. Unless the director wants to be the secretary.
I mean, are, are we required to have those positions?
No, I, I didn't even know where this originally came.
Oh, okay. I mean, so.
I'm just laughing because it says the chairperson will appoint all committees.
Under Article Four, officers, at the bottom of the page, number one. The officers of the board shall be a chairperson, vice chair, secretary. The library director will be accepted as an ex officia member and may serve as secretary.
Am I missing a part of this? Because I feel like it ends at Article 10 inconsistent provisions.
Says we meet on the second Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, we voted that, we voted that change last month, and then it was like a couple of nights after the meeting that Michael noticed the other one, so before I changed everything. Yeah, we, that, that change was approved last time. Am I missing? Because I feel like it ends at Article, and I looked through all of our policies, I, everything I have ends at Article 10. I, everything I have ends at article 10. Is it, is it something, did Michelle have it on file?
I don't think I ever saw this prior to the last. Some of this stuff is so old. Must have been in the attic or the basement.
Yeah, I don't, I just couldn't help but think that it ends like right, right at the heading. So I feel like something's missing. I can check, do you think Michelle, I mean, somebody must have, she must have a copy of the bylaws. For, do you think? I can, I can ask her and just see, I know, I know she's busy with elections, but I can ask her what she has.
And I did check that somebody knows about computers. There is software where you can scan a document and it will convert it to Word. I don't have that software. It's like a hundred or 12 hours.
Oh, yeah, we definitely don't have that software.
It's kind of like if you bought the real Adobe, not the Reader.
Yeah, we have the free version.
Right.
So, yeah, so I was hoping to see if anybody would be willing to type it up because it's.
On article three, it says the board shall be responsible for all Moines instead of, I think, Monies?
Articles.
Oh, yeah. Under number one.
Yeah.
M-O-I-N-E-S.
It's a typo, I think.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be capitalized either.
No. So how did you want to handle under article? Four, that took me a minute with the Roman numerals, that's bad. Article four, it says, yeah, the officers. How did you want to word that? With the chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary?
I think we can almost take all of this stuff out. And it looks like this was taken from some library. Let's say, I use the example, the Athenaeum is a standalone corporation. It's almost specific to more of those standalone 501(c)(3) articles.
And then, yeah, number two, two, we don't really need that, that chairperson conducts all meetings, appoints all committees, serves as official representative of the board, and fulfill all legal obligations on behalf of the board. I don't think.
We can't do squat on our own. You know, we can't spend money without the town account. We can't.
Did you want to remove that one as well? That would completely, no, that actually. Yeah, so did you want to remove number two as well?
Number three too. Because the vice chairman, that whole, that one goes too.
So, I mean, four, 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 we could keep because, and we can just say, as I'm, I'm basically the one that posts the meetings. So I can say the library director posts the meetings as required and responsible for correspondence. Officer shall be elected from the board at that regular meeting.
Term of office should be a year? Or be a chairperson. Right, so again, we don't do that. So, yeah, that needs to go too.
Which one is that?
Number five.
Number five. So, I mean, we could essentially just change number four if you want to do that. Article four. What you want to call a meeting hosting and correspondence.
Sure. Yeah.
It's even like in article three, number two. This board doesn't have the power to appoint you as a qualified library director.
So we, the board?
We recommend, we can interview, make a selection, recommend it to the board.
So the board shall recommend, the board shall interview and recommend a qualified library director to the select board. To be select for to appoint.
The sentence number four, under article three. We can't execute a written employment contract with you.
The, the select board shall.
Yeah.
Yep. Shall execute a written employment contract.
That's why I said this must have come from the standalone editing. Just for. This is sending us where we sat down with Carl.
Yeah.
Entire.
Article, sorry, article five, number two. Special meeting called by the chairperson.
Special meetings. I mean.
We do have special meetings.
Yeah, so special meetings may be called as needed or at the request of a majority of members.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, library director, I mean.
Right.
So it would probably be, you could be called by the library directors, how I would put it. You know, or at the request of majority members.
Yeah.
And that thing under article five, number five, talking about mass general law and a treasurer. We have no money, we don't have no money at all. That's all I have, the town count.
I was trying to see where.
Putting number two on the slide.
But where is the footnote attached to? Because I see footnote number three, I don't see number two.
Article number six too, we really would never have a special committee for anything, that really could go too. We wouldn't, for special problems or anything, we would never do that. We would just do it as a. Number two is with article four, the first, number one.
Footnote number two. Says the town can vote to establish an office of the board treasurer. Whatever. Says the town can vote, not, we can decide on a treasurer.
So did you want to strike that as well?
Probably take that out because I would just.
Yeah.
Right.
And then Tracy, you said article six it was?
Yes.
For special committees?
Yeah, we really don't really, we would never have a special committee where we would have problems, we would deal with it as a group.
So did, did everybody want to strike that one and then just move every article down a number?
Yep.
Sure. Article, article nine, we probably don't need.
Well, I mean, it might be good to have if we ever needed to amend it again. I guess, so it's noting that there needs to be a forum and that not everybody needs to be present. I will, I will check in with, I will just check in to be sure that there doesn't need to be an official chairsperson, vice chairsperson, and the secretary. And I'll just check in about the MBLC to just make sure that that's, that's something that's not required.
Should we not include this one in the vote just because we're not sure if there's more?
You know, what I'd like to do, since I have a million and one scribbles here, is to just, what I can do is at least change under article two, number one, about the two, two who will be elected and also change the meeting mating day and time, because I think that's important. So what I can do is I can make those two changes and then at least get that posted so it's correct. And then the rest of it with all the scribbles, I can just bring back next time and just have everybody read through it again.
Yeah, and then just to make sure we're not missing anything.
I'll check in with Michelle, I feel like somebody must have it on file somewhere because it really looks like something's there. There might be like 10 more pages.
Well, all the others have a date on the one we, the one the trustees approved them.
Yeah.
This one does not, I think, because it's not complete.
It's not, yeah, there could be 10 more pages. I don't.
Oh, God. What's a page meeting?
Yeah, so I will, I, there's a lot to make changes on. So is it okay if I, I will set a goal of like by Monday to have the changes made and posted? Because this is, this is a lot.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, everything looked good, I thought. I mean, I'll approve all of it, you know, except for this.
Yeah, so.
Until we know more.
If we just want to approve those two big changes about the election of officers and then the meeting dates. Or not the election of officers, the terms.
Yeah, and the select board, you can do that one too. Show, execute written employment for the library director.
Yep. Okay, so I've got those three that will at least get changed and posted. And then, and then next time you can look over, because there's a lot of scribbles here. So I want to make sure everything is.
So do I hear a motion?
I. Make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept the changes we have stated.
Tammy seconds.
Michael can, yes.
Maria, yes.
Tammy, yes. Tracy, yes.
And that was the last thing I had, I wasn't sure how long these policies were going to. But the good news is that's the end of them until something else is wrong. But, um, yeah, so that's, that is all I had.
What's the theme for summer evening?
It's, it's raise your voice. But that can go in a million different ways, so. We, we sometimes follow it, we sometimes do our own thing. At least for the adults, I just kind of do our own thing because it's, it allows much more variety that way, so.
In terms of this year's budget, of course, at June 30, do we have enough money or have we spent the money for materials?
Yeah, we're, we're working down with materials. So everything is in good shape. The only thing that was brought to my attention by our assistant director was that, I think it was the electricity line. It was just much more expensive this year than we anticipated.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
Understanding, understanding. So we may, I mean, we do have money in the budget, we may just have to allocate from the fuel line to cover any extras. It just means for the next fiscal year, you know, we were always looking at the electricity line as, as having a decent amount left over. And it went up so much that we didn't ask for more for this next fiscal year.
Ever source this month is going to propose their new rates to the state. I have no idea what they're going to be, but suppose that there could be less.
Okay.
Because there aren't, the argument had been since last November, December, is the cost of natural gas has gone up. And that's what most of the electric in Massachusetts generated with. The cost of gas, of natural gas in the last three months has been lower than it's been the last six or eight years. It's like 227 million cubic feet or something, or it had been six or seven dollars. So it's down dramatically, same as our home electric should dramatically drop.
Mine dramatically went up, I certainly hope it dramatically drops.
Because it had gone from like.
Mine went up 50%.
It had gone from like 11.9 cents a kilowatt hour to 22 cents a kilowatt hour. If you get the delivery fees, which is bigger than the electric bill.
Yeah.
So that, that's good, that's working out.
Yeah, everything is, is, as far as the info material spending is fine. Just like I mentioned with the electricity, we may just have to borrow for the fuel line to pay for it.
But do try to get those PLs for purchases probably by the end of the month.
Oh, of course, yep, Heather's working on that.
And all call the staff who are in the work.
We have one who's out, anticipated returning this weekend on Saturday for their shift on Saturday. So and then, then everybody will be back and then we'll be hiring hopefully the summer page soon, so.
Anyone else, any questions or comments?
Oh, just one quick question. Are we doing summer meetings or did we?
I was, I was just going to say, our next meeting would be Tuesday, June 13. Unless, I don't know what we wanted the schedule to look like for the summer.
Unless something dramatic happens, we usually don't meet them.
Should we, should we plan on a June, so our next meeting would be June 13?
Sure.
And then no meeting in July or August unless something urgent comes up, yeah.
Yeah, that's usually good for you guys too.
You can't retire or anything during summer.
Okay, so our next meeting will be June 13 and it's, not four, my computer says 4:46. It is 7:46 if somebody wants to.
I second, oh, go, go for it.
Don't fight over it.
All of us.
Tracy says yes.
Ending the meeting.
Alrighty.